Oh, my driveway. Yeah, mine, you know, well, it's pretty pricey. Oh, we got up the. Don't come to my driveway, you'll probably break the most. Three forty nine at Napa.
I think everything, I bought four little, yeah. Like this long, yeah, it is. And it was eight.
Hey, six o'clock, I'll call. How do we do that? The season's got the role, I take it? So we'll move on, do we have approval of tonight's agenda, please?
All approved.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Is there anyone here for the Black Duck Forum? Nothing for the Black Duck Forum, we can, we will move on. Number four, our first reading of this ordinance revision. Sound good.
This is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter fifteen land use and subdivision ordinance to allow for administrative boundary line adjustments. Lot combinations and parcel splits findings and purpose. The existing city code does not contain a procedure for administratively adjusting a lot line between abutting parcels or a procedure for combining two or three. Abutting parcels into one parcel or splitting one parcel into two. The council finds that adding such procedures instead of using burdensome plating procedures is in the best interest of the city. The city council of Lockduck Minnesota ordains section one, chapter fifteen. Will be amended by adding the following. To review that and act upon applications for the adjustment of boundary line between the abutting properties. The combination of two or three abutting parcels and split of a single parcel into two parcels as provided in this chapter. Section two, chapter fifteen of the city code is amended by inserting the following after section eleven point seven. Eleven point eight, boundary line adjustment, a boundary line adjustment is in, is the exchange of abutting land between owners through the relocation. Of the boundary line between two abutting existing parcels of property. Which does not result in the creation of a new parcel or the complete removal of an existing parcel. Two, the boundary line adjustment may result in a lot that is substandard for the applicable zoning district in which it lies or may expand. The substandard character of its existing substandard lot. Three, the boundary line adjustment shall create a need for a new road. Four, to initiate a boundary line adjustment, two abutting property owners shall jointly submit a signed application to the zoning administrator. On a form provided by the zoning administrator and submit the required fee. Included with the application shall be a certificate of survey provided by a licensed surveyor identifying the following. A, scale at not larger than one inch equals one hundred feet. B, name, address and phone number of property owners. C, north point indication. D, boundaries, dimensions and area of existing lots and the lots after the property, excuse me, the proposed line adjustment. E, legal descriptions of the existing and new lots. F, easements of record, G, water courses, H, all approachments, easements and right of way. I, existing buildings within two parcels of those within twenty five feet of the boundaries. J, locations and names of all public streets, rights, rights of way and railroad rights of way within a hundred feet of the outside boundaries of parcels. K, location of the abandoned wells. L, additional data is required by the zone, as required by the zoning administrator. Five, the zoning administrators authorized to request additional information or way of the submission of required information in the zoning administrator's discretion. Six, the zoning administrator shall reach decision on the application within sixty days of receipt. Of a complete application unless the applicants agree to an extension. Seven, if approved, the applicants shall record the deed. Effectuating the boundary adjustment to the county recorder's office within ninety days of the date of approval. Along with accompanying survey, failure to record the deed within said timeline shall render this zoning administrator's decision void. Eleven point nine, parcel combination. For purposes of this section, a parcel combination is the consolidation of two or three parcels. Resulting in a single parcel conforming to zoning standards. Or a single parcel that is more conforming than the conditions existing prior to the combination. Two, all parcels to be combined must be in common ownership. Three, to initiate a parcel combination, the property owner shall submit a signed application to the zoning administrator. On a form provided by the zoning administrator and submit the required fee. Included with the application shall be a certificate of survey provided prepared by a licensed surveyor identifying the information set forth in sections eleven point eight above. Four, the zoning administrator is authorized to request additional information or way of the submission of required information in the zoning administrator's discretion. Five, the zoning administrator shall reach a decision on the application within sixty days of receipt. Of a complete application unless the applicants agree to an extension. Six, if approved, the applicant shall record the zoning administrator's approval. Effectuating the parcel combination in the county recorder's office within ninety days of the date of approval. Along with accompanying survey, failure to record said documents within the timeline should render the zoning administrator's decision void. Eleven point ten, parcel split. For purposes of this section, a parcel split is the death, is the division of a single parcel into two parcels. Each of which conforms to existing zoning standards. Including access to an improved public street, splitting a non-conforming parcel under this procedure is prohibited. Two, to initiate a property split, the property owner shall submit a signed application to the zoning administrator on a form. Provided by the zoning administrator and submit the required fee. Included with the application shall be a certificate of survey prepared by the licensed surveyor identifying the information set forth in that section. Three, the zoning administrator is authorized to request additional information. Or way of the submission of required information from the zoning administrator's discretion. Four, the zoning administrator shall reach a decision on the application within sixty days of receipt. Of a complete application unless the applicants agree to an extension. Five, if approved, the applicant shall record the zoning administrator's approval effectuating the property split. In the county recorder's office within ninety days of the date of approval, along with their company survey. Failure to record the documents within the timeline shall render the zoning administrator's decision void. Setting, section three, existing sections eleven eight, eleven nine, eleven ten of chapter fifteen shall be renumbered eleven eleven. Eleven twelve and eleven thirteen respectively. Section four, this ordinance becomes effective from and after its passage in publication. Which will be considered after the November seventh.
We'll close this meeting and reopen and open our work session. I will make a motion to adjourn the city's special conference meeting and reopen the work session. All in favor? Thank you. And we get approval of tonight's work session agenda, please.
All approved tonight's work session agenda.
I will second that motion, thank you. All those in favor or any discussion on the agenda this evening? All's a favorite. Change order five.
Um, so in your packet for discussion tonight is change order five. Um, this is to supply and install snow guards as described from the request of the proposal which is attached by TNT. On these, snow guards are basically going on the north side of the building. To keep from. Something above the doors breaking, right? Am I off on that? A little bit.
There's some exhaust venting that comes out on our side out of uh. A couple of the different utility rooms that would be along that side. And the worry is that with the height of the exhaust stack, that any snow that does. Get moving and slide down that roof, you know, it's fairly long run there. If it's not slowed down a little bit, could possibly catch those stacks and rip them off, so. This is just to kind of safeguard that essentially.
Pretty, pretty minimal. So I've already signed this one. You guys were involved in that discussion. No questions?
But, I don't understand why that wasn't caught for. You know, metal rope. Stands picking up.
I think we've been over how many times now with this deal, so not being caught, I'm right there with.
It's on the record.
It's, you know, it's construction standpoint, it's a minor expense really. You get something under five hundred dollars. Downtown?
Okay, so, uh, in your packet, what I included for your review is pay request two. And this is part in documentation that was sent to deed for reimbursement for fees to DoMire X made him. Um, they were fully reimbursed. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw that procedure was done. Um, Carl came back last week and spread the fresh grant, the week before that he did the black dirt and hand seated. And so his section is done. And, uh, Kravenhop is working on the walls this week. He hoped to be done last week, but they're still playing catch up with weather, so hopefully. They'll have, we've got the siding on site ready to get put up and it's waiting to do the weather treatment on the whole portion of the theater. He, I talked to him on Friday, he said we still have plenty of time, we'll go have a time.
So just to come full circle on this, I understand that we are getting reimbursed from Minnesota deed.
Yes, we have a, we have a brownfield grant from them, it's a demolition loan program. And that works for about a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars to cover demolition acquisition and mitigation. And this is the demolition costs that are being, uh, reimbursed. At our March twenty third deadline, then, um, the. Forgiveness of the loan becomes fifty percent to us once the property is resold and redeveloped. Otherwise, the other half comes alone, I would consider.
So, half of it will be forgiven, totally, that's the maximum and the rest we will have to repay. I just came into this.
I understand.
So our total would be half of a hundred and sixty thousand left, like. In addition to.
Anything that wasn't eligible. Reconstruction costs ineligible.
We, we didn't wanna. Yeah, we don't want to lose our theater, you know, vintage building reconstruction, we will, we will take care of it. Well, I'd like to see vintage buildings retained rather than demolished. Anything else on this?
Uh, next time of business is to review the full report from our inspector on seventeen, seventeen summit. On the draft, uh, the certificate of survey for the existing library. Properties and then I have the purchase agreement draft from. Um, Deerwood Bank that the city attorney has reviewed. Um, obviously, nothing's going to get approved tonight, but I figured this is probably going to be the biggest discussion, so. I did. Have a little challenge trying to get this very large document from, um, Andy emailed to you guys, but I hope everybody was able to see it prior to putting it in the packet.
Yes, I will.
So, I guess my first question is, do you want me to put it on the screen or does everybody have a hard copy accessible? And have you made notes and had enough time to review it? Um, I did it all in here, it is in there too. Okay, um, I did send one copy to Miriam as well and to Kelly so that they can see it also. Um, it's been also reviewed by our, so the attorney also, so. Um, very thorough, um, as you read through, you can see that Andy did a, um, a full walkthrough inside and out. Of the entire building. In summary, what I took away from his visit is the building needs a new roof. Of course, we don't know how much that could total up to. Um, there's a few other concerns inside the building that would need to be addressed. To update, um, my observation is there's going to be quite a bit of renovations interior of the building or the actually use it. Um, those tellers would have to come out and I think they're probably folded to the ground, maybe, I'm not sure. But, uh, so anyway, um, it's, it's here for you guys to discuss tonight.
Well, you off, Dawn?
Okay. It might take a while. I went through this whole report that I got from her. Christina and this building is a lot rougher shape than we thought it was. And it's all, everything is dated, everything that. This building has is dated from when it was built. I mean, even the, the air conditioning heating units are all thirty years old. Um, they went last month thirty. You know, the. The door is like, the water, the water running in the basement from the sidewalks, there's. There's, uh, you know, there's so many places inside the building with water damage. Um, the roof is shot, the parapet walls all need to be refleshed and. And, and metal put back on, you know, new metal. It's gonna cost, I kind of guesstimated just roughly from when I used to do this stuff. I bet you it's gonna be a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars just for the mechanical around this building. Not talking about. But, I think the roof here was what fifty something thousand?
Yeah, I'll get to that one. Another conversation.
Yeah, so in that roof there, a heck of a lot bigger, so I bet you that roof there is eighty thousand dollars. I don't know where the money would come from to fix all this stuff, so that's one of my main concerns about this, you know. The electrical over there needs to be upgraded because it's just terrible. Um, you know, it's not up to date, there's spoiled wiring. The plumbing needs to be updated, it's not up to code. Um, we're gonna have to replace a whole bunch of it. If we, if the city buys that building. You know, there's just. The building is, I'm sitting empty. As we're getting some, it, it got in such disrepair that it's gonna take an army to fix it up. And the money that's gonna cost to fix it up is just gonna be astronomical. You know, it's. There was standing water, it must have been standing water in the basement. One time or another here, I know what you know about. There's nobody probably goes in there when it's, you know, considering that. I feel that Abby did a great job on inspection. He pointed out just about everything that you could see. And the average person probably wouldn't know any of that stuff that, that. He pointed out would be, you know, a, a major deal to the building.
I tend to agree with you, the average layman just looking at the building from the street. He wouldn't, uh. Wouldn't guess it, no. No, it's just. If you look at it from the south side, of course.
Well, yeah.
The parapet while the shingles are, what, or weather.
Well, they're all the way around. You know, everything's, like I said, everything was like thirty years old and. Things, things just wear out. And things not being used wear out, people don't believe that, but they do.
Yeah, towards the restart then.
Just like, just like a door, uh, uh, entry or exit, you don't use an entry door, it wear out. Cause they get rusty and things don't work right. Um, a leak. There's a lot going on in that building.
Ron, you got anything else? Uh, I haven't done an exhaustive search, I just kind of lost some of the. I'm working full time, so for these work sessions, I have a little bit to slice and. I got availability, but, uh, I did, uh, from. The review, are there restrooms on the ground of the?
There are restrooms on the main level, Ron, they are behind the cellar.
Okay, cause I did notice in the basement, there was a water closet lift station.
There's two lift stations in the building, actually.
Lifting what goes down the toilet up.
And the water from the roof goes into the sewer, city sewer.
That's not legal, is it? In fact, when we built the additional line of our house in nineteen seventy nine, that was not. I remember we had.
Treating the water at the sewage plant that comes out of the roof. Or some, anybody some pop that rounded into the city sewer and water. Then you, we're have to pay to treat all that.
But that had been a lot back in the late seventies. I know there's like a wetland behind there. Back there, Napa, behind Napa, we're doing some work there, is that, I don't know who's doing that.
They are, they're, yeah, it's, it's their deal, they're trying to clean up their roof drainage.
Yeah, it would be nicer, you know, in libraries, but that.
That was the same comment from Rusty.
So on top of. Put the numbers down. On top of purchase price. I mean, we don't have a real, we don't have an estimate sitting in front of us, but.
With the flat roof, so you can.
You're gonna be going.
Yes, it's gonna be labor intensive.
Two hundred worth of stuff, due to this building.
Water would probably be pretty cool, so. The price of labor wasn't way up, so.
With, with, with everything that Dawn put together, I, I wouldn't imagine that that would include any of the renovations we'd want to do aesthetically inside the building.
Correct.
For its services.
This is just to keep this building. And functioning and. Code compliance, yeah, that's a whole other.
Yeah, and, and Andy's not, you know, not a contractor, he's an inspector, so we can't put numbers on any of this.
And I did note in the report several times, like regarding the HBC, he mentioned, uh. Suggest mechanical technician review. Cursory. Expert inspection, so. We don't know the extent of the.
So they're from that there, eh?
Yeah, so. Figure out the scrap. Miriam, your thoughts?
Well, I figured this would be. See, exactly, I read through it also. It's disheartening, for sure.
It is, of, of a degree.
I would have never guessed there was this much to have to be done, but when I started. Asking a few more questions of actually more in this, you know, that world's never had a new roof.
No, that was evident.
Some of the aesthetics, I think, the library plans on taking up and would. Put some labor into it that we could make it work, but it's the other parts of it, you know, lift stations, if they wouldn't work. I don't wanna say I agree with you, but. I'm also an accountant and know that I can't ask the city to come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next couple of years, maybe they. He says roof has to be done right away, I didn't quite figure when I read through it. Why that would have to be immediate, but. Are there any grants, that was the one question I wanted to ask that are out there for that kind of. Work on a sitting on building. I don't know my grant, that part of the grant's enough.
Could end up going to like USDA for those, um, and they may be grant loan combinations, so there would be some debt, some debt involved. Um, the problem is, is. You would have to show a lot of, um, hardship. To have renovations and what would be considered routine maintenance to a building. Funded by a grant. Brick and mortar is really hard.
I know, maybe the, you know, I think we had the. Purchase figured out, it's the interior that we've discovered. I don't know, they consider that brick and mortar or whether that's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, on the roof, this is just. A lot of the moisture came from the repair, you can tell that. So if you don't fix the roof, it's no use going in and doing anything inside until. You get the problem.
Took it after like a dump or like last night.
Yeah, why do you ring?
There's one page in Andy's report, um, where, when I was with him, he notes. I want to see if I can find it, that there's some um. Water issues that he believes are in the south wall, just from um, the look of the wall and then. He put a sensor on it.
And he said south wall because um, self office on one hundred forty two.
High moisture content in the wall paneling.
Yeah.
So that's where it's implication that's coming from the roof.
Well, it's true, it run out of leaks, it it comes, it goes back down, yeah.
It's gonna take the path of east through this building. And that's where the parapet wall, the fake shingles are the toughest condition because of the constant sub, the sub side.
Well, that.
Yeah, and after thirty years, I understand that part. That I might get donated, but the shingles from minor compared to.
I was surprised at the enormity of the um, services and the extent of where the services were and I. Tried to put my, wrap my head around, hey, this was a bank, there was probably some complete sealed. Um, lower level rooms that had to remain sealed for security reasons, like the safe and so forth. But um, just the um, the roof fence. You, where the utility road is where that roof then was um, originally connected to is now just a hole. In the cement to that, they're just escaping heat right out of there because you can. See on the footprint of the ground where that um, furnace used to be, and then they did something different for that.
Why would you even operate it that way?
I don't, that's a really good question.
I didn't understand that either, I believe these other holes.
Yeah.
Well.
I I asked, I emailed Grant Frenzel if he, when Digwood purchased the, the structure from. Wells Fargo with the plans for the construction of the building were accessible, but I haven't been back from them.
Yeah. And I think if Wells contemplated closing it for years, they would minimize the maintenance as well.
I don't know how long that was.
So my question is this. And it's to everyone in the room. How do we stop that building from turning into those buildings?
Cause if we found this out. Anybody else that's going to purchase it is going to find that out.
Correct. So. That's, there's your issue.
But do we do a disservice to the taxpayers by taking on something larger than we can handle when we already have a facility? That we own and we serve us now?
I'm not saying it's the city's, the taxpayer's responsibility to handle a personal. Business like this, no, the the cost of it, no, I couldn't. If it was a vote tonight, it would be a vote, but we gotta do a whole lot more digging. It's worth digging, it's not worth, it's not something that we wanna, we don't wanna throw the idea away. But there's more than just one thing here, more than just the library, because. It's been vacant. How many years?
Eighteen was their last operational year. I think eighteen is when they closed.
And I would think some of this has deteriorated in those four and a half years. I can't believe it operated this way. But maybe I'm wrong.
The teller, the drive up teller page said hasn't worked for years, even when she.
Well, that's right, she was there.
I think, but if they anticipated the closing, they would have minimized the maintenance. To, or even to help offset costs.
That's why I'm saying a lot of it did deteriorate, then I think, they probably didn't heat it more than necessity. So I'm not so sure some of this hadn't been caused because of that, I think I did need it higher.
One of the differences between that building, it's got, you know, good bones, so it's. And currently, it's being owned by a tax uh, paying entity, which is very financially secure. They're not gonna default on the property, I'm sure, right? This building, this property, I think we had at least one tax.
You had one default, yes.
And then the rest of it was Mr. Gels.
And, and Tina's. And Andy Tina's.
But they were.
They were older, but they were, they were, they, two of the three were paying.
Correct, that's correct.
So those bones were. How do we? How do we proceed from here?
Well, I've provided to you guys um, the purchase agreement draft to review. I don't believe it needs. Much consideration or discussion tonight unless you guys read through it and saw. Came across some questions, obviously, if it were to be approved at the next, at a council meeting, then the next. Procedure would be to order title commitments and there would be fees involved with that. But um. That has to go to a vote. The only other option, the only other information that I provided for you to review was the survey. Result that um, from Matt Murray, that was ordered on the existing library facility. Due to the um, lot line issue for resale or to sell the building, but also it'll solve a problem. For the old law enforcement building too. Because of where the existing parcel line is drawn. Where those structures are, so that regardless of what happens, the existing library has to proceed, so um. What I can tell you in that. Result was that was a positive survey um, resulting in only needing to move. One block, block sixteen into the parcel description where the existing library facility is. Um, and that'll make two distinct lots for those structures without any ease um, issues and no encroachments on. Other existing, existing structures, including the one to the north. So, once the ordinances finalized, we'll follow through with moving those. Those blocks, those lots into the correct parcel.
But as it stands, each building is on its own parcel, is that not correct?
Um, the survey that I provided to you, Ron, is how it would look right now, the way parcel A. Where the existing structure of the library is on, only. Um, lot seventeen is in the parcel description. Lots thirteen through sixteen are in the parcel description for the old law enforcement.
But we're not, the buildings are all within the existing lot lines, regardless of properties. Last time I thought we both.
The library is not.
The library is not, the library doesn't have enough property. Yes, that's correct.
How long, I didn't ask, I should have earlier, how long does it take to get that changed?
Well, I just read the first ordinance revision, I'll do the second one on November and then I'll file the paperwork.
Okay, okay, November, after November seventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm doing the back work.
Thank you, thank you, this needs to be corrected.
Well, and it needed to be done. Yeah, though it needed to be corrected. I mean, by just looking at GIS overhead, it it also appears as though the overhang of the roof of the existing library is encroaching on the. Property to the north, and that doesn't end up, end up being the case, so that's good news.
That was good.
That'll, that'll help us um, when the maintenance building is, switches hands to becoming some. That's my understanding, Barbie has somebody interested in the old law enforcement center.
And we've before you not saw half the library.
You say the old law enforcement center.
The old lumberyard down there, yeah, correct.
You have to date things to my.
You gotta catch up to me. Okay, we'll use addresses. I still have people saying, you know, where someone's so, and I think, no. But as it, as it pertains to the conversation about the library. This is, that whole project of moving forward or don't move forward, now you have the information of the inspection that. Was requested with the letter of intent, and we can. Choose whether or not to move forward. I'll put the purchase agreements on. The November seventh council meeting, uh, max if that's how you guys wanna address and continue moving forward. Cause you'll have to come to a consideration if you're going to, and that would, in my mind, be the next step.
Yes.
Unless you need further information, like you're just going off the numbers of Don could fill out based on his experience. Which I'm sure are probably very close to accurate, but I mean, if you want somebody full on to look at it and give you.
We're ballparking it, uh, it's a big ballpark, but. We understand that it's also gonna be a. Big figure for that ballpark. Miriam, has the library seen any of this?
Only Kelly, and we mentioned, we didn't, I didn't have, I don't know when you gave this to him.
Last week.
I think on Friday I read it, no, I did not tell anyone else about it. I figured this would be how this would go today. So I'll be letting them know. What the result is and what my expectation. Was of tonight.
Well, I mean, unless there's like massive amounts of fundraising and donations out for.
Am I allowed to ask what the purchase price of the building is?
One twenty.
And we have fifty six thousand to put down on it, and then was planning to sell the building. But that doesn't cover enough for the huge amount that would have to go into this now. Sixty five, I'm sorry, I transposed those in my morning, sixty five thousand.
Yeah, we had, we had a pretty good idea, but. I'm gonna have to recommend that we don't move forward with it at this time.
Well, it'll be on your agenda to make a final.
But that would be my, my take on it. I think Deerwood made a business decision, and we have to also, yeah, as a private company. They have to. Live with the results of that. The expensive neglect is. So I would like to thank Councilman Don for the exhaustive review, I can see my little sickies that you drew, you spent a lot of time on that.
I got this copy from Christina, I was going out of town, she gave her copy.
Okay.
But it sure helped.
Yep, but we appreciate the time you put in, it saved me a lot of time.
Is that Deerwood's final off, or is that their final offer, like, knowing what?
The conversation when it all started, Amy, they are reducing their asking price. Due to the fact that it would become a governing, governing entity.
Cause the city would own the property. And they were giving a lot of consideration. Because one hundred and twenty thousand is probably very low for that. Yeah. They could give a donation to that way and. We would have put a plaque up or something for certain.
Well, didn't they knock off like fifty thousand right after?
I think the original conversation was somewhere around one eighty five, and it would be dropped to like one twenty, because none of that is really solid or documented anymore. That's just some conversation, so. Would it be lessened? Yes, but that doesn't necessarily mean.
Well, even if they took it down another fifty thousand, that's not enough to put a roof on, or start with the other.
Will the library board be meeting before the next? Council meeting?
Trick or treating. We might, we might have to. I will call tonight.
I mean, unless there's like.
I would encourage anyone, if they want to, they can talk to any one of us.
Well, and what they need to do is take some time, and I didn't print it, so I appreciate you printing it. Just to just look at this themselves and how much, and I appreciate Don putting even, even if they're rough numbers. I work enough in the industry to know that that's probably low.
Oh, I'm sure it is, I mean, you know, the price of materials nowadays, and the price of labor there is.
Putting up the um, snow guards, the labor was your most expensive parts.
Yeah, what, eighty six dollars an hour or something, yeah, it's expensive.
Replacement of those heat pumps, I don't know what.
Oh, I don't know, we may have to go back to the drawing.
Well, and. I mean, is it, is it a great project to think about, to go forward with? Yes, is this the right facility?
Maybe not.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the city has to stop.
No, and that's what I'm thinking.
It just needs to find the right path to take.
You know, like the heaters on top of the base, there's two of them up there on the building. I'm not saying they're not. Gonna work.
But it may take maintenance to get it to work.
Well, that, and, but they're not gonna last for very long, and then we're, we're gonna come up with the big money to replace them. So that's, that's where we have to kind of look at things where. We can maybe get in the door and open up and blow it, all of a sudden, then we have a hundred dollar hit on our bill.
And it all starts hitting at one.
Yeah, cause.
And it's on a grant standpoint and getting. Difference, it looks different to um. Places that are putting grants out and paying money out, if the facility is already yours. It isn't ours, you know, it's, it's different to go asking for money when it's still a maybe. It will probably get kicked back if it was a grant.
That's why I was asking, that's the only thing I've come up with over the weekend myself, thinking through it, with all that I know.
Absolutely, I mean, when we went forward with the, with the beach, you know, we already owned the property. And we already had a huge um, match from Landon. And the rest of it was just getting donations from those that wanted to help. It just ended up being an outpour, and this could potentially be one of those projects, it's just the question is, is this the facility that the project ends up being? Moving towards.
Okay, um.
You wanna build a new building next door?
Everybody thought.
I mean, you could probably put a pretty basic.
Seriously think about it, everybody. Does it still make it?
And it's not like there was a final offer, is that?
And that's just it, so. You gotta make, try to make sure that we're not carrying it down in a few years. All right, that's all I gotta say on it, let's move on, unless somebody has something else in final.
So I have. Did Deerwood have any of this information yet? No?
This information.
This report?
Did I provide it to them? No. Am I required to?
I mean, no, I don't know.
For it, I don't believe.
No, that, that's not, well, what I was trying to get, go at, is I, I'm not trying to squash this all, it's the idea of. Do they, do they have an idea of how bad the building?
Well, and would it be to your advantage to, to share it? Because maybe then they would do some of that, so that it doesn't end up being something we have to tear down.
Or it is your bargaining chip when you go into um, your purchase agreement.
That, that's so.
If it was a house and you were buying it and you had an inspection done because your bank required you to in order to get your loan. That becomes your bargaining chip when you're making an offer, does it not? So it.
Just a question.
Yep.
That's a good point.
City paid for the inspection. It might be in their favor to share it.
If the council wishes me to, I sure can.
No, that's, it's something that we know.
Well, and now that it's in your packet, it's public. Sorry.
Doesn't even matter.
No, wow, regardless, most people don't.
Well, my.
Review your, your, your packets, but still, yeah.
Well, is there something, do you wanna change the offer then?
Well, that's.
We should be glad to give it. We should be glad to give it away so that they don't have to put that kind of money in.
That's what I was thinking, maybe they would just donate, get it off their hands.
The question gets to be. Can we even accept it? I mean, would you be willing to accept it that way? You know, that's a whole different.
We could actually, I think we should actually. If things move, if they say something like that, then we should get the real numbers on it.
Mm-hmm, true, true.
See where we're moving, come out at. Before we even make any kind of commitment or. Or think about it because if it's gonna cost the city two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred fifty thousand dollars if it's building up. Where are we to get all the money? If we don't own it, like you said. You don't, you can't get a grant without owning.
Yeah, and so then if we owned it because they decided to mostly give it to us, ten dollars or something. Give it to the city. You know, we have sixty five thousand to put down on it. But we have to have it. You have to be able to move into it to be able to sell the other. That still only gives you fifteen to fifty five thousand, maybe if we're. If we're in the amount they think. And um.
Interesting.
I know, I mean, do you take that chance? That's the question. Maybe we need to think about it a little bit before this stuff. And I'm sitting on this side of it, you're sitting on that part.
And, and with all due respect to the council, just because it's on the agenda, it does not mean that has to be the thing you take action on it.
No.
No.
You know?
I know how to say let's stable this.
But it will be on your agenda. So you can say that.
Should one of you approach group before that or no? You know, we can't do it, so.
I'll do whatever they tell me to.
Well, I think it would be difficult for them to donate. I see that. I have my doubts on it, but.
If you don't ask.
And I'm not, I'm not worried about offending anyone, believe me.
Just not grants.
He would have to get back to the board. He'd have a good idea. As to what, my guess is they have no idea how bad it should be.
Why I brought that up.
Mm-hmm, that was a good point.
We don't know unless we know, so Christina.
Share it with Pam.
I think perhaps we do.
Yeah, can do that.
See what the board thinks. Deerwood's board. And as a. Concerned citizen. That doesn't wanna see another tear down happen. And with that, is there anything else on this topic? Okay.
Thank you for all the time and effort. We'll keep at this. We're not quitting.
Christina?
Yes, sir.
Next.
Um, the DMV is awaiting a final financial um. Set up on the backside of DPS with M and B, that's the Financial Department of the States. Um, my connection in Park Rapids told me today. At the very latest, we'd be up in there by the end of the year, so um. Her. Um, Superior is doing route checks this week and won't be back in until the third, so I. I'm just waiting for them. Doesn't still go, I just don't have final date for you guys yet.
Good.
No, hopefully it's gonna be this month, cause my tab.
Yeah, I know, you told me that two weeks ago. You are, you are down there, you're fine. Gotta fall over. Too funny.
Okay.
Um, the annexation process that we're on. Um, so I can report that I did attend the High Stone Board Meeting last. On Wednesday night, on the nineteenth, I presented um. The process of where the city has um been working on doing this city-owned annexation. And kind of gave them our whys, you know, because. I figured that's where they would have their questions. Um, kind of all stemmed through, you know, licensing ourselves to the golf course. Being able to have our own property inside our boundary and I also gave them, you know. A decent argument for a local sales tax option that if. That would be the case, then the sales tax, the golf course spends could also come back. Um, uh, the Milo Barclay is one of the supervisors, he said, yeah, he basically said, you realize if we fight this. And it goes to, you know, arbitration. You would win anyway, and I said, yes, I know, I said, but this is how we'd like it to proceed. Um, it's unfortunate, they had, um, they have three supervisors, they had a quorum there. But their clerk strongly recommended that because this is such a. Fairly large chunk of property that they would prefer to have all their supervisors present. To final vote on it. Um, right now, if they would have voted Wednesday night, it would have passed because I know. Mister Pober and Mister Barkley would have voted for it. Um, so their next scheduled uh township meeting is until the ninth. Um, and I offered to come back and brief the third supervisor. On it, uh, they did not find that necessary, so I also introduced that. Um, um. Instead, if somebody wanted to come in and talk to me or me up, that I could tell them, but um, that's where that process is at at this point.
Okay.
I don't foresee this being delayed any, in more past November.
Okay, so the uh, that was my question is, they will be voting however.
They will be voting, yeah. Um, and they're uh going to vote on the. Two thousand twenty-three golf course liquor license at that same time too, so they know that they have to include that as well, so. Um, I gave them a really good um summary of. How their approval of the golf courses liquor license benefited. The amenity this year. Um, thank them and also explain to them that, you know, what, what's good for Black Tech is good for Hines. I said, yep, what's good for Hines and good for Black Tech, so we all understanding, uh, uh, we all. Know that board and this board that this is a shared benefit, so um. I don't believe that it's going to be a fight. Interesting. They want to have full board representation, to have a full vote. Field where that would be in their best interest.
And for the November meeting, do you have to go back or?
I have a conflict, but they said that um, that wasn't necessary, that the other two board, the other two supervisors could um, fill that one in. Yeah. And for the record, that's um, Bill Ray, that wasn't there.
No, good.
So if anyone knows. Anyone knows Bill and, you know. Wants to discuss it with them, they're welcome, but I, my guess is that Bill will come and see me out. So that's what that is.
Very good.
Um, letter app, just to recap, Mike and I had um, our. Scoping meeting with the FEMA reps last Friday. It was a very long meeting, I felt like my head was gonna blow off. Mike included um, when we were done, but it was extremely detailed. We went through our damage inventory. Um, very detailed, um. And that's not easy when the disaster happened almost six months ago. So we have sixty days from Friday to have that damage inventory completed. And we've been assigned um, a new project manager and she's working on all of the notes that came out of that meeting on Friday. To have that fully completed, so it's moving along. I am removing City Hall. Um, from the damage inventory based on the information I'm gonna share with you in the business.
Did we add anything?
Yes. Yes, the issues that um, Mike has been having on Railroad Avenue are. Mounting. Oh, yes, we added a couple of things. Any questions?
Any question on that one, please?
When I get that inventory detail, I'll share with you.
Good.
Um, letter G is just direct, the draft for that tax increment spending plan that um, Todd Hagan from Ellers is working on. Um, he and I are gonna meet again this week and have this tweaked before the November seventh. Um. Public hearing. But he plugged in the dollar amounts that were accessible. For the spending plan to be adopted and we're discussing. Uh, potential project options and what it can and cannot be spent on so that I can truly translate it in the public hearing. Um, no disrespect to Todd, but. It, it's difficult to narrow him down, saying, okay, here's something that we'd like to do. Does this qualify? Is it eligible? And, you know, there's so many. Um, legal things in the statutes that he needs to make sure it does. In a nutshell, it has to benefit.
Yes.
The, yeah, the, something for housing and it has to benefit. The adjacent um taxing district that it already is located by, so what I'm. Trying to work on is the improvements we need to Oscar Avenue to see if the funding can go towards that. Um.
And what would be adjacent to Oscar Avenue?
Well, first of all, you've got the townhomes that the tip it, tip district was created.
For?
For, um, and you also have additional housing north of there. With we, um, with the studio apartments, so you have housing on one side and commercial on the other, which is, they're both benefited. Um, what I'm trying to finalize from Todd is could the tax increment? That's excess be fully used for that road or is some of it gonna have to be assessed? That's the part I'm trying to narrow him down on because my, in my mind, I see it being spendable money that benefits. Both sides, but he believes that there's restrictions as to if it can be a hundred percent used that way. Or if part of it has to be um, a debt obligation because of the commercial side.
I got you.
Questions?
And when would the public hearing be for that or so?
I mean, that'll be proceeding the city council meeting on the seventh. Yeah.
Cause Christina must have done well, so.
Yeah, so you guys don't have to show back up with them. And the last item on local, on old business, um, Max is just our local sales tax options, so. If we want to reintroduce this, um, we have to have a resolution passed. By January thirty first in twenty three. And I would like to get your feedback on moving forward with reintroducing a resolution to. Um, have a local sales tax option applied again. Granted, it wouldn't be able to be approved or go to the voters. Until the next general election, which wouldn't be until twenty four, but. Don't hurt to start. I think we go off the same premise of what the five um. Uh, local areas that would benefit the community would be that we did in January and February. And just continue going on with them. I don't think there'd be much res- revision needed from the original document except for the resolution.
I think we should go ahead with it. Especially. Knowing that the jail project is probably going to be asking.
Yep.
For the same.
At the same time, and, and it may be different, ours might be delayed, counties can have local sales tax options approved. Differently than uh, cities can in terms of timing.
Let's see.
Um, I don't know if twenty three would be the year that the county would get theirs approved in twenty four, hopefully ours. Or if the county has to wait till twenty two thousand twenty four.
Well, I mean, with the legislature, you know, approving ours, I don't, I don't see there. Don't see us having trouble doing that.
No.
It's going to come down to the voter.
It's gonna be, come down to the voters and the fact that you have probably over a hundred new legislators going to be voted into the. Senate and the House starting January first, and most of them are all gonna start fresh, so we're gonna be. Starting from square one with potential new arguments and to have, but.
I mean.
Our argument, our argument for it is exactly what the statute is asking for, Max, so.
We're kind of foolish to not be ready for it, but we can do it.
And we already put it in court. I mean, before, but does that matter?
It does, you have to start over again now.
But, yeah, but I.
But yeah, but yeah.
All right. Do you have to start over every year?
I seem to, but. What about the money we had paid or we haven't paid?
We have paid.
We have paid.
Yep, that's done.
For the promoting of.
We paid.
Project.
Yeah, so what we did and only pay with set for once for um. The proposal for. Getting that um, document to the legislature. That promotion portion is completely. What had happened afterwards.
Because we have not paid for any.
And promoting, no. And I don't honestly know if we're going to need to. I think we can do it ourselves. I think we've got enough documentation that um, we put together and we just need to door knock and talk to the right people.
And. It'll help, it's changed how it's burdened.
Once it gets to the vote, once it gets to the ballot.
Once it's on the ballot.
Yeah.
Cause that was. Some misleading language or something that.
Well, the argument is, is, you know, how you have to word it, if it can be simplified or in this case for what we're doing, does it have to be five separate? Votes or can it be one because we have five separate projects? We'll work on that, as long as you guys wanna continue to move forward, I'll draft a new resolution so that it's final.
I think so. I think we got, I think it's council okay.
Okay, I'm not giving up until this thing goes through. Yeah.
Well, we might will rate some of the, or not rate them. Read, read, that's a read, read. Sorry, read some of the benefits of all the people coming up north instead of all the other towns getting all this.
We know what you meant, though. I agree. So that's all I have for old business.
Hey.
Moving on to new business.
Moving on to new business.
I would like to introduce um, uh, Christina, Christian, she's here to. Um.
Do I need to go up to you then?
You may if you want, uh, her interest in serving on the planning commission and I provided to her a letter of intent. I've invited her here tonight so that you guys can meet her and she can discuss her interest. Take it away, my dear.
I'm just, I'm just gonna sell myself now.
Sort of, yeah, or why, you know, I mean.
It basically was one, um. I love this place and the, the more that I can serve, the more that I can do. I, I, you know, I put in, I mean, I worked local elections, I've never done anything. Government. What?
Yeah, the third somewhere.
Exactly, exactly. I would see over the person that loves this town the way that I'm insane, we love the town. Would be perfect to keep it going and to. Not see it. Buildings. You know, I.
Can I call you Christie?
Absolutely.
There's respect with Christina.
No, I need to, I, it's my name. It's my name too. Well, your name, you don't flip around the M and the A and that's the first and last name. I do.
So. Christie had approached me. And asked if there was something she could do on the city or the city or any. Committees. And I told her that there was a vacancy on the planning commission. I think she realizes that it's. That, no, it's not something to be overlooked. It's an important role. I know, I. The people that I've known that have been on the planning mission don't necessarily know everything there is to, to know that they've been there. The people that I've known that have been on the planning mission don't necessarily know everything there is to to know that they've been there, but. I think that uh. She's. Really serious and wants to do this. I think we should let her have a shot.
Yeah, it's not every day you get somebody that wants to. Volunteer or.
It's not every day that she gets someone that visits here and stays and leaves and comes back.
Do you like cold weather?
I love winter. No, I'm trying to get, I mean, nothing in life is a hundred percent. I love this place and I'm gonna do a list of women and I'm gonna adapt and I'm gonna. It okay the three years.
She wouldn't come here because of the winter. In the first year she moved here, that's our forty below. We had. So she really was acclimated her first year here and she stayed, so.
So you mentioned you were, you've been, you were here for three years. What what did you do when you were here? Were you affiliated with any businesses?
I worked for the mom, I worked for the mom for a little bit and then towards the end of my three year stay. I started working at the system living. Doing some, you know, age home helping stuff. Currently I'm back and I'm working up at Hillcrest. I cook in the kitchen with Jim.
Oh. And we were, you say assistant of you mean the.
Up on Fourth Street, Murphy's uh behind the bus garage.
That burned down a few or burned a few years ago.
Correct. That part you don't want to.
I'm actually in the, it's called the first edition. Wasn't the original town. The local history book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Planning is kind of a, an odd duck when it comes to a committee too because there's so. There's a lot of rules and and things to follow, but um why planning, I guess, is my curiosity is. I mean, it, I I realize it's an open vacancy, but. What can you offer? I guess I don't, not many people wanna get into the planning section of it, of this. Setbacks and rules and.
I'm up for the challenge. Alright, I'm up for the challenge. I mean, I always said I. I couldn't imagine somebody. I'm up for it. I'm right, you know.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is really, really, you think this is boring. Planning commission kind of stuff gets.
If if getting in on the planning commission is my step to my step in.
Elections only rule is well. Any other questions for Christie? No, it's nice to meet you and thank you for your very thorough letter.
I guess the next step would be um the council would consider a um a revision to the appointments. Of committee's committee members at the November seventh meeting. Through, then you're on board for the next one meeting.
Thank you.
We'll see it on our agenda.
Yeah, you'll see it on the agenda.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Alright. Okay, so my new business. Is about City Hall.
So. Here we go.
So. Yeah, I've I've been talking about, okay, we got the insides of the building done and now I wanna work on the outside. So I got a referral from um TNT contractors. For a, this is gonna be a horrible way to show you guys. For um. Somebody to come in and take. So I've been here since fourteen and the only. Person that's been up on my roof is a roofing company after a hailstorm and they said, yep, your roof is fine. I'm like, okay, good. Um, but I know that the exterior of the building needs some TLC, but I was. Most concerned about the roof because since we've done the interior renovations, I'm still getting water. Done on the new tiles. So um the owner of Range Cornus and Roofing Company um came in. A week ago Tuesday climbed up on the roof, took a bunch of pictures and uh, you know, kinda looked. At where the water is coming in and intruding into the building, especially in that southeast corner of my office, which was um. A pretty big mess when we did the um renovations. That area needed a lot of plaster work. This section here needed a lot of plaster work and that corner did as well. And then he went up on the roof to try to find where the re- where the sources of the problems. And um what he determined was the roof is aged out to the point where you're gonna need a new, I'm gonna need a new roof. Um, for reference, um, these are a couple of pictures on. On just the flat section of the roof. Sorry, Amy, it's my butt's in your face.
Floodlight to shine on the Anderson fabric signs.
Yeah, I don't understand that. That's a very good question.
Looks like a wooden platform over a drain.
Yeah. Yeah, and what he said is this little, or no, Don, you told me this, this little cat vent. Should be on that.
Yeah.
Yep. Is not connected, but this is probably our biggest issue. Where the stucco is on that. What do you call it? A. Parapet, thank you. Yeah, is where it says City of Black Duck on it and then Anderson's wrapped the vinyl wrap around it. The stucco, the the bricks behind the stucco is failing. And you can see where there's been um a membrane uh glued around the side of this section of that. And then the brick is starting to come out behind the stucco. It's pour, it's pouring out. That is directly related to that water. Area right there in the ceiling. It's coming in, but the biggest problem that he found. Is, okay, so that's the sign. Is that it's starting to pull apart from the other section of the building. It's starting to actually move away. And it sits on top of this phone, this actual exterior wall. Um, I talked to Miriam, I have an email into Annette. And it sounds like the fabric stores probably had some problems in their west wall in the past too. So Terry put together a quote, I I, it's a worst case scenario. What do we need to do? He says, well, you need a new roof. So he quoted me for that. There's a couple other um pictures. He doesn't know where that goes. He doesn't, he can't really tell. And I only thought that that section where the sign was, was Anderson's building. Until he took all these pictures and gave it to me and I was like, oh, it was on that wall. Well, that makes sense. Um, I said, what I need to know is. Okay, give me three options, you know, we fix everything while that's pulling that portion of that. Sign down this kind of out of his wheelhouse, so he doesn't, can't really quote me for that. Um, and then. Give me a quote for fixing the whole roof. And then what can I get by with? So there's another quote that he provided. But. Just doing the minimal doesn't make sense to me based on the quotes that he did provide because. Flat roof and it's my understanding that they're very costly to um fix. Because the labor intensive. My, my biggest. I I emailed Carl Goldmeyer cause we care of this um. You know, project and she sent him the pictures I haven't heard back from yet. This is something he wants to take on, but I'm thinking we need to take that sign down. If we wanna save this building. And like, need to know if the council's okay with me looking. For funding to fix this roof. I talked with um. A grant specialist from Witseth when she thinks that a community facility grants from USDA, which is. The process we use to get the skid steer could be an outlet and their. Their grant. Program initial letter of intent, I think it's. Supposed to be invited at the end of October, so I'm trying to get some paperwork together and in the meantime, just see if we can get some funding. Cause just replacing the roof, this quarter is fifty seven thousand dollars. That doesn't include the labor intensive portion of taking that. Sign down too.
When you say the sign, you mean the whole stucco wall? And just to clarify, the the black flashing we see there, that's the top of. The wall of this building, is that correct?
So the black is our building. The brick is Anderson.
That's clearly sitting on our wall. Yeah, and when we take that down. If we took that down, we have no responsibility for doing anything to the wall or don't.
Do we?
No.
The hole on the side of the building.
I think it's Anderson.
It's is their vent for their attic. It's ungraded air in their attic.
Okay.
And then they probably have rooney birds up there. To dry heat up.
Got it. Okay.
But they should have a screen on that.
Yeah, he was really surprised.
So this is gonna have to be. Do to do this, cause there are rubber up on their building, so it's gonna have to be. A joint effort.
Okay.
Because. If you take down. This stuff here, what's gonna be?
Exposed to them.
Well, what's gonna be failing on their building? You could use a brick like that. Um, to do that, the uh rubber up against that, the brick usually gets rotten. If water has gotten behind it. So this might be a big. Big yard.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have no idea until it's tore apart, what the cost is gonna be on it.
Particularly the picture that she had up there where the wall is bowled out and there's a pile of brick fragments below, so that's all flaked off.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's poured out to across the ice damage.
Before you move my head, but this, you better.
So I I did the email on that um from the shade store and asked her if she had any problems. She was gonna talk to Claire Cupcho. But she has not heard of the water intrusion issues on the Anderson side. But um, you know, she, I, um, you know, she hasn't been with the company as long as like Amy Miriam started there. Well, I'm sorry. She was there for a long time um and at outlet too, so. I'm sure she could speak to if there's been any intrusion issues. I don't know what's gonna happen if we take that sign down on that others, on their side.
So you take the sign down and the brick behind it needs to come down too and flatten that out.
Here's our wall and then there's the, how do you say that word again? Your parapet on top.
Okay.
It's doesn't, it's not our wall going straight up to the top.
Look at that there where the black is, that's our, that's the top of our building.
Right, and that's right here.
Yep, this is, this is our exterior wall.
Okay. And then that other.
And this is Anderson's and this is the parapet. That's built on top of this.
That would explain why it's wet in the basement in that corner.
To cover up the brick and make a sign. It might be actually, it's probably smeared right on the brick now. Probably had to cover up the windows when you're there.
That you cannot get into. Tim, Tim Freeman's back up there, so he would know.
The bath stucco is actually on the two third part of their building.
No, she can't get into the apartment anymore. I don't know what it will do, but I can tell you that it's damp in the basement from that, at that corner. Then you have to keep humidifiers running all the time.
Okay, so.
What happens if it keeps like going this way? It'll fall right on top of me. You guys want these up up stuff?
No, I would say Christina, if you're looking into fun, try to find funding for it, is that? That you're asking for council's permission?
Yeah, because I need to know if I can keep going on this. We got it. I'm gonna have to find the funding. I. I told Terry from Range Cornus that this wasn't a right now job that we're looking into what. What we need as a city to uh to fund. Um, the exterior of this building. I was also waiting for um.
License plate.
It's gonna go in one of the windows, so. Um, to to start looking at what it's gonna cost to keep this building. Up and, you know, finish off the outside and everything, so, and I needed to start at the roof.
And. You and I had a conversation about it and I said. As long as we are the tenants, as long as the city is the parent. It's our responsibility to be making payment.
Ron's right, though. We'd probably end up having to do some type of surface treatment or something to.
So is that fifty five or fifty seven thousand doesn't include redoing the roof?
That is redoing the roof without doing anything to.
Oh, that's just the sign and then it's an additional twenty one thousand to do.
No, that twenty one thousand is if they um only did the uh flash the walls, curved pipes and drains for the roof system.
So you don't have any idea what it might cost to take all that?
I do not, cause it wasn't in his wheelhouse, give me a number. I need to find somebody else to do that.
Oh, that's why you did that, correct? Okay.
Like I said, we're right next door to those three buildings that just got torn down.
We have to fix this. I mean. But. If you could find funding for it, would really be.
Yeah.
Best thing.
My my, the other option I could look into is um Minnesota Roll Water does micro loans. And um because we are the utility billing administrator. Um, it probably will qualify for something through Minnesota Roll Water. Those, those are small, that are obligations for one. I can um. My contacts for that too, but I don't think it's gonna be a hundred percent grant funded. Because it goes back to that same argument we were talking about the library. It's still maintenance. That we are obligated to be doing and we haven't been.
We guess thirty years.
Well, how old is this?
Well, let me guess, thirty years.
Let's try and double that. And again, I don't know when the last treatment was done.
When you don't know when the roof was put on.
I wish I, I wish I could tell you, but I don't, Don.
Did they do it at the same time Anderson did there?
Again, I have no idea. I don't even know who to ask, except maybe Bob Senior.
Did you see this one?
Seems to me like it was. I don't remember. It seems like it was one, you know, they kinda did it together.
So this could be five for the room, but I'd say we have to keep going with it. Yeah, I think everybody's on board. I agree, and I think if we get to the point of, you know, doing the roof for that cost. It may benefit to have more than one quote.
Yeah.
Grant.
If I do the candy facility. If I do the candy facilit. And can community facilitation through USDA, they require three.
Yeah.
We had to do that for the skids here, so I'll have to find two other people to give me a quote. And then I gotta find taking wall down here and I don't think I'm gonna get three quotes for that. But yes, I'll keep working on it.
Good with that. Council?
Yeah, we should move forward.
Anything else? For new business, Christina, that's maybe just didn't jump out onto the page.
Uh, not that I can think of, but if you were suggesting I miss something, please.
If you're hiding something, no.
Please say something now.
I have no.
I don't have a twenty six items consent agenda for it, it sucks to me.
I make emotion to adjourn.
One second.
I have a second. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Hey, what's everybody doing the twenty seven?
Why?
I need, I need one more person to help me clear pancakes at the senior center.
I'm working, what's that? There you go.
Five, seven?